Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. I first want to apologize for keeping my sunglasses on. I had Lasik surgery yesterday, so it just feels better if I have them on. So please, I accept my apology. Thank you so much.
I thought it was your Elvis impression.
No. So would you like to do -- we'll call the meeting to order and roll call Karen?
Thank you. Connie Coleman Lackady?
Present.
Don Daniels is excused. James Guerrero?
Here.
Nancy Hudson-Eckles?
Present.
Ryan Pearson?
Here.
Paul Wagman?
Present.
Christopher Webber?
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you so much. So approval of minutes for June 5th. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minute?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. So move by Commissioner Paul Wagman and seconded by Commissioner Webber. Any comments? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passed. Agenda updates? Any updates?
No ma'am.
Okay. We do have a speaker tonight though, right?
Correct. And actually, she will be under that small cell wireless bullet.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
And any public comments? Any public comments? Just state your name and the city you live in.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Kimberly Allen and I live in Olalla, Washington. I -- my business address is in Isocua. I'm with the Wireless Policy Group here on behalf of Verizon Wireless this evening. And I want to thank you for taking up these code amendments. I understand there aren't many substantive changes to the wireless code update that you're doing. You did some tremendous work on the interim code several months ago. And we support the work that staff is proposing today. And we'll be in attendance at the meetings that you have to discuss this code in case there are any questions about 5G or wireless deployment in the city of Lakewood. So thank you very much.
Greg Bush?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Greg Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. And again, I'd like to thank the Commission for taking up the code amendments. And we anticipate submitting further comments in the future with some small clarifications and suggestions for small changes in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Last call for any public comments. Okay, thank you. So unfinished business. Tiffany?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, Mr. Brewer is obviously not here this evening, so I'll kind of play his role tonight. But I'm also the lead staff for the 18A update, which is really what the focus is going to be this evening. As far as unfinished business, it is 18A itself. But we're also going to hear from Emily Minor with Ogden Murphy Wallace. And she's going to be providing you, as a Commission, background information and then an explanation of what the code is regarding 5G wireless. You just heard a couple of people during public comment refer to the same topic. Earlier this year, this didn't come to the Commission, but the City Council adopted an interim regulation set through emergency ordinance, which is why it didn't go through the Commission, to respond to an FCC ruling from last fall about how local governments had to amend their code to get it ready for what's called 5G or small cell wireless facilities. And again, you're about to hear a whole lot more about what that means. But in any event, the interim regulations were adopted and then they were recently re-adopted in order to just last as long as the 18A update process will last. But what's in your packet for this evening is a reworked version of those regulations that will become the permanent code. So the amendments that were just talked about by Greg and then what I think we'll be hearing from both Emily and Kimberly are some -- just some tweaks to what you have in your packet in order to make this permanent code really follow closely what that federal ruling from last fall requires, and also just refining the interim regulations that the city adopted a couple of weeks ago. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emily Minor to give you a what's what on small cell wireless.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me this evening. I'm excited to be here. We've been working on your code for a little while.
Thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. All right. So as I was introduced, my name is Emily. I'm part of the telecommunications group at Ogden Murphy Wallace. I'm also in the municipal practice group. That's my sort of general practice area. And I work with several cities around Puget Sound. But I've taken a special interest in telecommunications, specifically since this order came down last fall and everybody's been wanting to update their codes to come into compliance with the FCC order. And so I've really delved into it and it's been a lot of fun. So that's a little bit about my background. Now we're going to get into sort of what's going on here. So a new type of mobile network wouldn't be new if there wasn't sort of different technology to make it different than what the existing network is. And so you're probably used to seeing these big macro towers around your town and pretty much all over America. They're big. There's multiple antennas on them. And they are supposed to transmit long distances, right? But as technology has evolved, we are seeing a need for more capacity rather than for the technology to travel longer distances. And so that was the evolution of these small cells. And so small cells are going to be likely deployed in the right-of-way because that's where people need the most capacity when you're on the bus or in the transportation. And it's an easy place to deploy these, this type of technology. They're going to go on telephone poles, light poles, just, you know, things structured in the right-of-way. And it's -- what they're going to provide is the ability to give better service kind of at the street level and into street buildings without the interference of the big buildings or trees or whatever else could be in the way. And that's why they're going to be a little bit lower down.
Emily, can I interrupt you really quickly?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. For just a little bit more background for your benefit, Commission, the FCC ruling that came out last October basically says, "Local governments, you will do this." So you're hearing information about changes that need to happen with our code in order to come into compliance with their ruling, as opposed to this is proposed, Lakewood could say no altogether. That's really not the situation here. It's more a matter of nuances to what can be done within the boundaries of that ruling. Thanks.
That's a good point, Tiffany. And it's true. This is something that all cities are having to do. The FCC order essentially restricted how cities can regulate the deployment of this kind of infrastructure. And so every city in the country is dealing with the fallout of this FCC order and is having to come into compliance with it. So everyone is updating their codes, not just Lakewood. And so I'll go through kind of the outlines and the parameters that you can work within this FCC order. There's unfortunately not much wiggle room, but where there is, we've given you as much discretion as possible. So we'll walk through that. Go ahead. Yeah, please.
And you may cover this later on, but the thought just occurs to me, is this in addition to the current structure that's there or is this replacing any of the current structure?
And you're -- the structure being the code? The existing code?
Well, the tall towers. So if I have a tall tower next to me?
Yep. Good question.
Would that be replaced by a smaller unit or just?
They will not -- they will be in conjunction with, for the most part, because you still need these bigger towers to continue transmitting or, you know, repeat the technology across longer distances. So they're going to be in addition to. Those big towers aren't going away anytime soon. They might later on in the future, but for the immediate future, they're going to be still around. Good question. All right. So I'm kind of talking about the difference between 4G and 5G and what this -- excuse me, what this new technology is doing. So small cells are not necessarily just for 5G. Right now, the current build-out is for both 4G and 5G. 5G operates at a slightly different wave portion of the spectrum. And so you're going to need a slightly different antennas, some modifications probably on the design elements to accommodate that different technology. Some other differences is just that the 4G networks use the lower frequencies, below 6 gigahertz, but 5G uses higher frequencies. And those are preferred. That's kind of the new technology portion I was talking about earlier because they can support the higher capacity for the faster data, which is what everybody wants. You want to be able to string your Netflix while you're on the bus or, you know, wherever you are. And that's really convenient. It's great. But that comes with needing more technology to be able to make the -- have the data come faster. 5G also uses shorter wavelengths, which means that the antennas can be a lot smaller and they can provide more directional control. So instead of these kind of towers before that have antennas going in all different directions, the smaller 5G, 4G and 5G will have directional antennas that are a little bit more targeted. And because they are the shorter wavelengths, though, that they're -- they won't transmit quite as far, and so you're going to need more of them. And so that's why we're going to see a lot more rolling out in the right-of-way. And again, to your point earlier, we're still going to need the bigger -- the towers to go the further distances. So that's not going away anytime soon. All right. So I want to talk a little bit about what makes up the small cell because this is important because it's what you can -- you can dictate as a city the aesthetics of how these are placed on the poles to some extent. So I think it's helpful to talk about what a small cell is. So at the beginning, you're going to -- at the top of most of these, you're going to see the antenna first. Each antenna is going to be roughly three cubic feet in volume. It shouldn't be any bigger than that. That's a requirement from the FCC order. And then the other components are going to be pretty much everything else. This is going to include the conduit, the equipment boxes, all that kind of stuff. And everything else, other than the antenna, should include -- should be less than 28 cubic feet in volume. And I know that's pretty big, but that's what the FCC order has allowed to be on the pole. So we're working within the constraints of that FCC order and they allow all the other equipment to be up to 28 cubic feet. So just kind of seeing what it looks like on a pole. This is the anatomy of the small cell. At the top there, you're going to see -- this is all in front of you too, right? Is that -- because you guys are high-tech here. I'm just all my little cities and have to look up the screen with me. So at the top there, you're going to see antenna and then the fiber and the coax conduit. There's some power there, maybe some new fiber service. And then as you go down the pole, you're getting to the radio and the sort of the equipment boxes. Those should be generally shrouded or concealed in some capacity. And then usually there's a disconnect, a power disconnect there. Sort of this one doesn't have it. I think there's only one antenna up there. There can be up to three. Usually it ranges from one to three antennas. The height of these, of this equipment, is ranges from 25 to 65 feet. So in some cases, you're going to need a slightly taller pole. In some cases, they can go right onto the existing pole. And then you're also going to need the power and the fiber as well, just transmit everything. All right. So how do you approve these, this new technology? That's sort of been the big question here. The goal of the SEC was to streamline the permitting process for these because they, FCC has decided that it's important to get this technology rolled out because they think that everyone needs Internet, which is probably true. But in order to streamline that, they've restricted how cities can regulate the deployment of these, of this equipment. So to get it done in the amount of time that the FCC has given us to, given cities to approve these permits for these facilities, we are really recommending that cities work together. The Public Works Department works with the Community Development Team because these are getting rolled out in the right-of-way. It seems like Public Works would be the typical sort of department head to approve these. But there's also going to be a lot of aesthetic design elements that is where the planning department can come in. So it's going to be important for different departments to work together closely. So kind of going back to the timing itself, though, processing a small cell application is, you have 10 days once you get an application in to decide whether or not you have enough information to approve the permit. Doesn't mean you need to approve it right then, but you have to have enough -- you have to tell the carrier within 10 days whether or not you need more information. And if you need more information, you need to be able to go back to somewhere in your code and say, "You didn't supply this requirement or this element of our application." So it's very important to have the code that you guys have put together or that we've put together for you that you're going to be looking at tonight to be able to say, "Hey, you didn't submit X element here." So that's why we've made the code sort of as robust as we have. It might seem like a lot, but there's a reason for it, I promise. So one of the questions that we get a lot is, is it even possible to do it in this amount of time? Because that's a short amount of time. Typical land use applications are, you know, upwards of 120 days. So this is a really condensed timeline. And honestly, it's going to be hard the first time you get it. We've had some cities that have gotten applications already and we're blowing through those timelines and that's just how it goes the first time. You know, you learn. But we've, I think we've developed a process, an application process and an approval process that will work going forward once you get the kinks worked out. And so that's the goal of this code, is to put something together that can be met, can be within the federal shot clock periods. Other elements of the approval process, you have to get a franchise because you're going to be in the right-of-way. You have to get a right-of-way agreement generally. If you're going on city poles or city infrastructure, you're going to need a lease agreement. All of those approvals have to be done within the 60 to 90 days. So it's a tight timeline. And so we're recommending that cities have sort of template agreements for the franchises and the lease agreements. Those are usually negotiated, but we're recommending that you put together sort of a take-it-or-toll-it kind of situation. And you have an option to work with the carriers to toll some applications so that you can work through a negotiation period if you want. And we're recommending that you offer that if you think that they want to negotiate or they're asking to negotiate, you can put in a tolling agreement. We'll definitely work with city staff to help you get through that if that's where things are headed. But the shot clocks are what is sort of the tough, the tough part of this process. And so we are building a code that lets you work within those shot clocks so that you don't get in trouble and the carrier doesn't want to come in and sue you for not getting it done in time. So it sounds scary, but we're, the goal is to help you get it done in the right amount of time. All right. So this is the fun stuff. This is what you have the most control over, is these aesthetic standards. So this is where the FCC has provided the cities with the most discretion, but it's also important to remember the standard against which these regulations are tested. So whether the regulations materially inhibit a carrier's ability to conduct their business is the standard that the FCC has given us. So you can't do anything with your aesthetic standards that would materially inhibit a carrier's ability to come in and deploy in your city. So to ensure that regulations don't run afoul of the standard, the FCC has outlined some general guidelines for the aesthetic regulations. And as you can see up there, they must be reasonable. They must be no more burdensome than those standards applied to other types of infrastructure deployments in the right-of-way. And the standards must be published in advance and objective. And so that's the other big piece of the code is all of these design standards that we've put in. They are, the reason that they're in there is because they need to be published in advance. Everyone needs to be able to see them. And so you might not normally have as much detail as you would for this, you might not normally have as much detail in your code, but for the reasons that we've outlined here, the FCC has required us to publish these in advance. So we have listed as many as we think we need here. Some other sort of pieces to think about here. The guidance should be generally applicable. We don't need to state that there's a specific brand of paint necessarily, but you can say that it should match, that the equipment should match the pole or be painted to match the pole. Other design standards could include the amount of spacing off the pole that the equipment is allowed to be, or requiring that for non-wooden poles, the conduit be placed inside, internal to the pole. The reasonable requirement is to ensure that the aesthetic requirements are technically feasible and reasonably directed to avoiding or remedying the intangible public harm of unsightly or out-of-character deployments. So sometimes, as you can see, that pole on the left there is not a super attractive pole. So we're trying to work within reasonable ability to sort of make the poles look as aesthetically pleasing as possible. And as we talked about, the aesthetic requirements being published in advance, you don't need to prescribe in detail every specification, but it's helpful to set forth the objective standards and criteria that would be applied so that everybody knows what the criteria is. It's pretty basic. One of the questions that we get a lot of is undergrounding. You know, it's nice to, it'd be nice to put all this stuff underground because it's not super attractive, right? But undergrounding was specifically addressed in the order. And it's considered an effective prohibition if the wireless facility cannot technically work if placed below ground. So for example, you can't put an antenna below ground. It just won't work anymore. And so we have to be able to let the equipment be above ground so that it can actually function. The FCC suggested that carriers are allowed to deploy small cells on existing structures in undergrounded neighborhoods or permitted to build new structures in that area. So even though the city is working with, maybe the city is working to underground a certain area, the small cells will still be permitted above ground in that area. And that's just, just what the parameters are that we have to work with. Some things that we can't base our standards on are the technology choices of the city, i.e. like fiber or the DAS systems or, like I mentioned, undergrounding requirements or health considerations. So we have to work with the aesthetic standards that the FCC has laid out and can't kind of expand beyond that. So what we've done, excuse me, in 18A 95 is just sort of outlined the, we've consolidated all of the wireless facilities into one portion of the code. So we've got in the beginning, just the general provisions. Then we've got the macro facilities. And this is pulling mainly what you've had in your existing code and put it here. Same thing with the eligible facilities request. And then the small wireless facilities is the most new portion of the code. And we've got that, we've got design standards, we've got application requirements and all the good stuff in there. And I'm happy to take questions on the specific aspects of the code if you want. But I have a feeling we'll be getting into that later on as we continue through the process with you all. So the next step, we're just going to get your feedback. There's going to be additional planning commission meetings. We'll have a public hearing and then take any more feedback. And then eventually, we'll be sending this on to City Council. And then finally, I just wanted to show some pictures so you had an idea of what we're looking at here. This was a trip down to the Las Vegas Strip. We have a couple of different types of antennas, as you can see there. These ones are all shrouded on light poles. Again, this is more internal equipment, just showing the different varieties. Sorry about the funny angles on some of these. I was taking them as I was driving or someone else was driving. I was in the car. This is down in Seattle on wooden poles and probably what you'll be seeing a lot of here. Similar, this is just a utility pole. Sorry, the angle's a little dark there. Oops. Wooden light pole. I think this one is in Bellevue. These next few are in Bellevue. Up a little bit closer, you can see the antenna up there. There's two antennas and the equipment box a little lower down. I think this was an AT&amp;T photo simulation. Let's see here. Yeah, of a, yeah, an AT&amp;T pole in the city of Eugene. So just a nice pole, something to strive towards. And then this was a, also an AT&amp;T pole with internal equipment, although I didn't get the design standards for this. It's a nice-looking pole, but the diameter is unclear. So that, it's something to think about because you need a lot of space in the pole to put all the equipment in. So sometimes that can make the base of the pole be bigger and it's, it's hard to tell how big that diameter is there. But it is a nice pole. And then we've got a rendering of an AT&amp;T metal pole with the external equipment box. This is proposed for Kent. And then this is a Horizon pole, just a small cell pole. And you can see here that the, sort of what I was talking about before with how big the diameter can get when you put the equipment box inside there. They can get pretty big. So we are, we definitely have recommended or put parameters in the code to not have single-use poles like this just for small cell. We've tried to make sure that they go on to existing infrastructure first, so. For some decorative poles, just showing the different types of options there. So the pole on the left is sort of, is the original pole. And then you've got external equipment in the middle and then internal equipment on the far right there. And then a T-Mobile design. So again, all carriers have different designs and that's kind of part of the process. That's what makes it challenging is that every carrier has a slightly different tweak to it, which is why we can't necessarily say, "Your pole has to look like this." We can work towards that, but because everybody's equipment is a little different, we're trying to just make objective standards that can be flexible to accommodate all the carriers. And that's all I got.
So Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Couple of questions.
Okay.
So what I heard was even if we have an area that doesn't have poles, we don't have a choice. Poles can go in. We don't have an option to say, "You can't put poles in this area."
Right. Yes, sadly, yep. You can, you know, the pole will be, it won't have necessarily a lot of wires coming off of it. You have to be allowed to put the antenna up.
Okay. And the height was anywhere from 30 to?
25 to 65 feet.
Right. And that's determined by the carrier, not by, we can't limit that.
Right.
And then do we have the ability to require shrouds on all of them?
You can, but again, just sort of objective and it depends on what the carrier needs. But yes, you can try and work with them to shroud everything.
Okay. And last question is, what's the expected density? So how often do we, are we expecting to see these?
Right. Good question. So the density, the distance that this, that the wave can travel, that coming out of the antenna is about 500 to 1,000 feet, depending on the carrier and what their equipment is. So you'll be, and each carrier needs that, each carrier has that distance requirement. So you might have, you know, AT&amp;T on one pole and then on the other side of the street, you'll have Verizon and then, you know, back and forth all the way down the street, so.
Thank you.
Is that like a visual distance or like, I mean, is it, are you going to be affected by lots of trees and stuff?
Yes.
It could be?
It could be more.
Yeah.
Yep.
And what's, what's the maintenance schedule on these, you know, compared to kind of the bigger, the bigger?
Yeah, the bigger towers?
Yeah.
That's a good question. I might defer to the experts here. Can we just sort of tag team? Is that okay? That's sort of why we have them here.
Yeah. For Verizon, small cells typically require no maintenance of any kind. A tower is usually once a month. A single truck goes out to do maintenance. But the small cells, if they go down, we get a signal back at our, our operation center and we'll respond to it that way, but no regular maintenance.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Do you want to respond to? Yeah.
I was just going to add to that. AT&amp;T, our standard answer is, we anticipate, I mean, it could be monthly maintenance for small cells, but in practice, it's much less than that.
So the, the signal gets shielded by buildings then or not?
It is affected by buildings, yes.
So that means when we, when you talk about the density, you may need more?
Yes.
Now, do vendors share the same antenna?
No. They each need their own.
So if we have 10 vendors out there, then there'll be 10 different poles?
Yes.
Times whatever need for the coverage?
Yes.
Are these going on roofs?
They can. We have requirements in the code to, for structure-mounted small cells. We also have some for strand-mounted. And so they can be on alternative surfaces, but right now, we're imagining they're going to be deployed just in the right-of-way initially, and then they will expand to buildings.
So, so we're going to have every service provider to have their poles out there? We're not going to take a lease from one provider in the city? Or, I mean, it's a lease agreement for us, right? So?
Yeah. Madam Chair, there's a couple of things to add into the conversation and correct me if I'm wrong, please. First of all, because in Lakewood, the city doesn't own its power utility and it doesn't own most of the poles, you've got Puget Sound Energy, Lakewood Power and Light and a number of others. There's going to be leases between the carriers and those companies, and then the permitting happens through the city. There are some poles that are owned by the city and in that case, they would be making the lease agreement with the city as well as the permit review. Part of the conversation, though, during the interim regulations was the idea that a single pole could potentially support more than one service carrier. But obviously, you see the amount of space one of those things would take. But obviously, you see the amount of space one of those things would take, it would just be over time, maybe if they shrink more, or just, if there's a way to do that, there is the potential for more than one service carrier to use the same pole. And then, as was just mentioned, they can also go on either the strand between the poles and/or the structure. And then, one thing I wanted to ask anybody and everybody is, there was discussion too about some of that ancillary equipment being on the ground rather than on the pole, so it's just the antennas on the pole and everything else is down?
Right.
Is that kind of going away, since everything we saw was on the pole?
No, it's a good question. We, it depends on the city. Some cities want it on the ground, just because they think it'll look better, and that's just how their city has been developed. Other cities, we are having serious issues with the right-of-way, and with ADA and safety issues, and so they just can't fit any more street furniture on the ground, and so they're asking that everything go up if it can. And so, it, it depends, is the question. I mean, yes, it can go on the ground, is the short answer.
So, is the provider the one that furnishes the equipment?
Yes.
Any other questions?
And then...
Mr. Weber.
So, we've talked about primarily public property, basically, right-of-ways, things like that, but I'm sure there's accommodation for private property, so if a private property owner wanted to lease, or if the provider needed the space that was private property, there's obviously going to be some kind of arrangement there, and then, of course, the permitting goes through the city.
Correct.
But we didn't really talk about, is there any significance to dealing with private property owners or anything that would affect this code?
No, so we have some provisions to account for that. For the most part, we're imagining that, we were, it's been our experience, that carriers are wanting to go into the right-of-way initially, and so it'll be interesting to see how we need to develop the code provisions further for private property. We do, again, have provisions for deployment on structures, that's imagining both private and public structures, and the permitting would be similar, but as of right now, we're not imagining there's going to be a big rush for private property.
Mr. Weber.
So, and each one of these stations needs to get power from somewhere?
Yes.
So, that's worked out as far as the...
They, as part of the application requirement, we are asking that they tell us how they're going to be getting power to their, their equipment.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for being able to have the capability of what we're talking about here, but I get a little nervous. This reminds me of when I move into different houses, you know, Comcast and those cable people, they stick holes in everything, and they got wires strung everywhere. Are we looking down the road far enough to say, "Is there something better?"
Yeah, that's a good question.
We'll have all this trash everywhere, and then you have to clean the darn mess up.
Mm-hmm. We do have abandonment clauses, an abandonment provision, so if the facility is abandoned, we have some provisions of how to deal with that, when it's left over. But your point is well-taken. This is really new technology, and we don't know that much about it yet. We're learning along with everybody else, and so we're working within the orders that the FCC has given us, and doing the best that we can, but if you don't like it, I would highly recommend reaching out to your representatives and asking them to make some changes at the federal level. Because we're, we're pretty much handcuffed with what we can do.
Well, I understand.
Yeah. It's a good, it's a concern. I mean, I think it's a really valid concern, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it, unfortunately.
It's like we've done in space, we've got space junk everywhere.
It's a good analogy. Yep.
Any other questions?
What's that?
Well, thank you so much, Emily, I appreciate that.
Thank you. It was really nice to meet you all. Have a great evening.
Lakewood Municipal Development Code, our favorite 18A. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Tiffany Spear, here to hopefully walk you through a relatively easy way to look at this complicated topic. Let's try that. So, what I provided all of you in hard copy is this PowerPoint that I'm about to walk through, and just as a heads-up, at the very end of it, the second-to-last page, there is a little chart that shows you a summary of where the substantive changes are within this proposed package. So, I'll go through this in much more detail, but just remember that that's there, so as you're preparing for future meetings where 18A is discussed, this is where you would spend your time. I would suggest reviewing the language that you have in this thing, you have it electronically, but those, these are the sections where the substantive changes have been proposed within the code.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, jumping back up to the top of this presentation then. Oops, sorry. What we're talking about, as you well know, is a reorganization of the Land Use and Development Code within the Lakewood Municipal Code at Title 18A. There are pieces of this code that were adopted at the time of incorporation, and then little change has happened. There's other areas of the code where quite a bit of change has happened, and so it's become sort of a mishmash with good intentions, but never really a comprehensive update and review for consistency and clarity, and just making sure it reads in a logical way. So, that's a lot of what's happening now. The city is a little over 20 years old, and the thought was, the time has come to where we just update how the code is organized, so it again reads like a smooth, logical document, if you were to look at it from a 50,000-foot level. But also, there's some changes that are being suggested because of either experiences by applicants, or by the staff, or there've been just a number of changes within various chapters, to the point where we need to look at totally rewriting things. The scope of the code, though, has expanded a little bit, actually, since the last time we talked about this earlier this year. So, originally proposed to you were changes within 18A only, but since then, there've been a couple of things that have come up in a few of the other related codes. First of all, there's a new chapter being proposed within Title III, which is where the city's revenue and finance information is included, and that's related to how performance bonds, or other sort of cash guarantees, or other guarantees that a developer might provide to the city to guarantee completion of particular punch list items, or when they can get their final permit, but they still have a few things to finish up, how that would be handled financially in the city. There's some changes to Title XII, where right now, there's a few things regarding street trees, we're going to take that out and just drop it all into 18A. And then, there's a few related changes within the subdivision code, the land subdivision code, because of the changes being proposed within 18A. So, Titles III, XII, and XVII, I kind of just said this, but again, bringing information in from XII, XVII, into this new chapter 3.80, and then looking at the street trees and bringing that into 18A as well. And then, as a practical matter, the city generally uses the 2012 Puget Sound Partnerships' Low Impact Development Manual Street Tree List. So, when a developer were to come in and say, "We're redeveloping something, or we're starting over with a new green site, we need to know what type of street trees to install with our project," that is the list they go to. It's something that the state Puget Sound Partnership put together a few years ago, and it's, it's trees, A, that are native to the area, somewhat drought-resistant, they're going to grow well in a street environment, rather than being in more of a forested environment. So, just making that list available and clear within the code itself. Oops, I'm sorry, went the wrong way. One big thing I wanted to lay out for everybody involved in tracking this, whether they're here tonight or not, is that 18A, as it sits before you, is still subject to change. We've, we've still got some internal discussion going on among various divisions of the city, and we're also still getting public comment. So, while I would request that you look at this now, between now and the 21st of August, just know that you may get some additional edited language as we move forward toward the public hearing on September 4th. And I did it again. Where did I go? Sorry. There we are. Okay. So, now we're just going to start jumping through chapters themselves, and what you'll see in the PowerPoint is, over on the right-hand side of each one of these pages for the next however many slides, is whether or not there are substantive changes within a particular chapter. And if the answer is no, that'll explain that, or just say no. And then, on all of these slides, you'll also see, within that little rectangle off to the right, see Page X out of tonight's packet. And so, that's where you would jump to, to see whatever topics are mentioned on this slide. So, again, hopefully, this is going to make navigation a little bit easier for you. So, for instance, if you were wanting to go to, look at Title III and Chapter 3.80 in particular, you would go to Page 11 of tonight's packet and be able to see the start of that chapter. In addition to the financial guarantees, so here's a number of other things that are now incorporated into 18A that weren't involved or presented to you earlier this year. Without going into too much detail, the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, or the SSMCP, is a group that's both Pierce and Thurston County, and they work with the base, JBLM, to make sure that development and life, basically, outside of the fence, and life inside of the fence, and operations of the military base are compatible. And one of the things that came out of then this, the SSMCP this year, is a recommendation to create a military influence area, not only for Lakewood, but for all of the jurisdictions near Lakewood, near, excuse me, the base, and particularly where flight operations occur, in order to make sure that lighting, specifically, but also notice, for instance, of any time a code is being changed, or other ways that buildings are constructed in order to avoid people getting too much noise of the plane flying overhead if they're inside. Those types of things are now incorporated into this military influence area code that they've suggested. Because Lakewood is immediately adjacent to JBLM, it's actually an influence area for Lakewood that's citywide. So, what we've done is take a chapter out of 18A and just explained all the things that apply because of the fact that it's next to the base, but it is a citywide suggested change. Reasonable accommodation, rehousing, that is referring to situations where you may have ADA or other specific requirements for an occupant of a house, where they need maybe some special caveats, or special edits to the, the general code, and giving the community development director the ability to say, "Yes, we're going to waive that, or we're going to allow a different version of this requirement because of that reasonable accommodation we need to make." There's the site-specific rezon process, and if you hearken back to the beginning of the year, we talked about this. This is separating out one piece of land use work from the big comprehensive plan process. And if you remember, this is something that used to go through the council, now it goes through the hearing examiner. It's just a different process. If an applicant is saying, "I want this particular parcel rezoned," as opposed to, "We want this area rezoned," or "We're dealing with policy language." So, that's now got its own chapter, but it's verbatim what that adopted ordinance already said, and what you already approved and recommended onto the council earlier this year.
You taking questions right now?
Sure, if you want to.
I, I want to go back to that reasonable accommodation.
Okay.
If I may. So, what you're saying there is, you know, and our population is, we get older and stuff, need ramps and those kind of things, is that what we're talking about here?
It can be. This is the language specifically out of the Federal Fair Housing Act. It's accommodations in the rules, policies, practices, or services to afford persons with disabilities equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. So, it could be the wider hallways, and the grab bars, and the ramps, and what have you, in order to make an aging-in-place situation possible for an occupant. It could also be some other disability where, for some reason, I can't even think of a good example, but for, for whatever reason, they need to change the structure for some way in order to allow themselves an enjoyable habitat. See if there's anything else.
That, that makes sense to me, but then the next question is, is when that person passes the law on, or they, or they move out of that property, now, how do we get it back to where? Is there any provision in there to consider when they make changes, that it, they can put it back?
At this point, the code doesn't have that in it, and I guess the thought process behind that is, from the federal level, is, once the house has been constructed that way, maybe there's a future buyer that wants those same accommodations, and they would actually appreciate how the house has been built, and/or you remodel it, just like any other house gets remodeled over time, so you just go through the usual permitting process when the time comes. So, there, there is nothing in the code that says, if this individual, this purchaser that needs these things, leaves for whatever reason, you have to change the house to general code requirements. That's not in the code right now. Sorry. Here we go. Okay. So, outdoor lighting, as I just mentioned, is related back to that military influence area, but this is one of those specific ones that affects, as it says, outdoor lighting within the city, and I'll go into this in a little bit more detail. But the premise here is particularly flight and nighttime operations on the base. If they are out flying, training for nighttime operations in a rural part of either America, for whatever reason, or somewhere else on the, in the globe, if you have too much lighting in an area, it's no longer useful for them for training purposes. And so, there's that. There's also landing safety, making sure there's no confusion as to where the runway actually is. And so, these, this chapter's requirements relate to basically making sure light is directed down, and specifically to where it's intended to go. And this is actually a win-win type of a code for once. This is where the technology has caught up with this requirement for various reasons, and now you're able to get LED, or some other low-energy type of light that is already shrouded, that does already do that directional type of light output, and it's more affordable than the older stuff that's, that's getting replaced. So, whether someone is intending to do some of these changes that are recommended by code or not, to some extent, it's already happening, because the technology has already started to move this way.
So, is this a go-forward, or do we have to go back and retrofit our homes?
No, this is not a retrofit. This is go-forward. And single-family homes, you'll see, there's quite a bit of exemption, where you won't even need to worry about it.
But, but I, I think this is something in a community that's very important, you know, ambient light, if, if you like to look at stars and stuff, ambient light just is a killer.
Mm-hmm.
And so, some of these things are really, you know, nice to have.
Yep.
I understand the military training, NVGs and all that stuff, I mean, it's, you know, it's blinding.
Yeah. But you're right, there's multiple reasons to do this. There's bird migration, and other flying creature migration issues, there's ambient lighting compared to starlight. Yeah, there's all kinds of reasons why these issues have, have been discussed. Wireless service facilities, we just heard from the experts on this one, so this is where that new chapter will be replacing the interim code. And then, the sign code, which is all fresh in your mind, I think, will be dropped into 18A Chapter 100, so it won't change, it'll be, just be incorporated into the new Title 18A. And then, again, there's going to be some administrative policies discussed, probably on the 21st with you in more detail, that are just getting inserted into the code, rather than continuing to be held as a administrative policy by the Community Development Department. And then, the downtown sub-area plan, again, you've recently touched this as well, will not be changed by this process, it's in its own section of the code under 18B. Here's a comparison of the chapters, I think you've seen this before, but on the left-hand side, in the white, those are the current code chapter titles. There's 10 of them. On the right-hand side, in that, I guess I'll just call it tan, there's 11 chapters now, and they may have similar names, but please don't assume, because the name is similar, that they're exactly the same in text. There are changes probably through every single one of these chapters, except maybe the wireless service facilities and the signs, for you to be aware of as we move forward with this process. So, here we go with the first sections within 18A. Again, this is 18A10, the basic provisions, and actually, I wanted to, excuse me, make this point, too. If you look at the flow on the right-hand side of the names of the chapters now, hopefully this is going to make sense. Basic provisions and definitions. So, anything that's, that's used in Title 18A, if you're looking for a definition, you're going to find it now in 18A10. The administration, the basic nuts and bolts, discretionary permits, so not those ones that are allowed outright, but where there's some sort of discretion by staff, by a hearing examiner, or by city council is discussed. The land use and interpretation tables, so in which zone can you do what? Overlay districts, so you have your basic zoning and your basic uses within those, and then you have those overlay districts which lay on top of that other code, and you have to look at both of those things in order to decide what you may do on a particular property in some instances. Site planning and general development standards. Once you know the zone you're in, and the usage you're going to do, what's required? What type of setback? How much parking is going to be needed? How high can your building go? What kind of landscaping are you going to need is, is in the next one as well, next chapter. Parking, that is a whole new chapter, just as a heads-up, all of that text has been updated, but that is, if you're designing a residential, a commercial, an industrial, whatever type of development, there's going to be some sort of parking requirement, and that is the chapter that you would go to figure out exactly what is required for the type of project you're building. Housing incentives, this is actually a chapter that doesn't have any change as well. This is dealing with Section 8 or subsidized housing projects. And so, again, this is just putting it in its own chapter, and then things wrap up with the wireless service facilities and signs.
Definitions.
Yeah.
You moved that up to the front. But my, my question is, I was reading through some of those, it, it's like trying to find things on Google, or, what do you call it? I mean, you have definitions in here, but is that definition general enough so that everybody can find what they want when they're...
The way it's set up is, the words that are included in the definitions section are going to be somewhere in one of these chapters. So, if you find that we haven't defined a word you think should be defined, I guess the first thing is to let us know that, and we'll add it into the definitions chapter. But the thought is, say you're in 18A10, 100, where there's some general requirements, and for some reason, there's a term in there that doesn't make sense, it doesn't have a common, a commonly-understood explanation for how to use it in this chapter. You would take that word that you're maybe confused about, and go back to 18A10. You would take that word that you're maybe confused about and go back to 18A10, look up that word, and hopefully it's defined. That's the thought process, is you don't necessarily read 18A10-180 just for the heck of it. You access it whenever you need to, once you're inside one of these other chapters. Does that make sense?
Like a dictionary.
Well, yeah, I mean, so when you use a dictionary, you've got to know how to spell a word, or you've got to have a little bit about it. It's, again, just like looking things up in Google, you know, and say, okay, what is that? I know I want to do some kind of drilling and masonry, or I want to, you know, architects got strange words.
Go to the definitions, they're right there for you. I think what, if I can jump in, so the words in the definitions section appear in the bulk of it. So if you see net square footage or something like that, you don't know what it means, go to definitions, net square footage, it'll tell you what it means.
Yeah. And I guess if you were saying, I want to drill, you would look in the chapter names or the subchapter sections and find the section that's going to talk to you about drilling. And so you're in that chapter and you say, hmm, okay, 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 wait, what does that mean? That specific word is what's going to be in the definitions section, hopefully, if it's confusing. That's about the best way we could do this.
Well, I don't think, I don't know if there's an easy solution to this.
Yeah.
I mean, because we've got to be talking the same language in a sense, and when we started this process several years ago now of rewriting this thing, the hope was to make it simpler so that somebody from the outside says, hey, I would like to do this, and I can find it someplace and I can find the instructions that I needed to go get it done.
Right. And hopefully, what someone who has never seen this code before would do is open up 18A10 and look at the first section and see basic provisions and definitions, and go through enough of the basic provisions part, excuse me, to be able to see, okay, I get the basic process. And then they start looking at administration maybe, and then they figure out by then, if they want to see a zone or a land use and where it's allowed, they would know to jump to 18A40. They get to 18A40, they start looking at things like commercial uses. No, I'm not doing that, I want to build a house. Residential uses, okay, I'm going to go to the residential section. And then if a word within the residential section doesn't make sense to them, they would know to jump back to the definitions section where all of those definitions are included, and hopefully it's there, you know, so it's pretty self-explanatory.
I'll just give you an example. Somebody that lives less than a block away from me wanted to put a fence up. So he went to the city website and said, hey, what do you need permits for? And he read that definition, and his interpretation of that definition was, he didn't need a permit. And the next thing you know, he's got his excavator out there and he's doing stuff, and guess what? Somebody came and put a red card on his project.
Yeah.
And then he goes, oh, okay. So how do we make it clear to a citizen that wants to do the right thing, thought they did the right thing, and then now it's an adversary relationship instead of a positive? So how do we work through some of those?
I think part of it, and one reason, too, why 18A is getting updated overall, is to make sure that there are electronic hyperlinks and the ability to jump back and forth in different parts of the code once you're looking at it online. So right now, we're just looking at the code itself as a standalone document, but once it's uploaded and done, you'll be able to do search terms. So if that person had gone and opened up the code page, they could have typed in fence, and you could do this right now, actually, but if you type in fence, all of the areas in the code where the term fence is used pop up, and then you're able to start to read through and figure out if it's needed. And hopefully, it would have said, he would have been able to find, if it's over six feet, you're going to need a permit, which is probably what happened, but I'm not sure. So what we're trying to do within these various chapters now, as we update the language, is make sure that there are links within the code, too. So for instance, any of these sections that say, go to some other sections to read the requirements there, you're going to be able to click it right there and it'll take you exactly to that spot. So it's going to be more user-friendly than the code that we have right now. Just note also that they'll be able to do search terms online. So this is the way that the rest of the sections about 18A work. I don't know if I'll go through all of these in extraneous detail, but what you see is the list of the various sections on the left. So these are the things that are included within 18A10, starting with the very basic, with the title and the purpose of Title 18A. But then you get all the way down to 18A18 in your definitions. On the right-hand side, are there substantive changes? The answer there is yes, so that's a red flag for you as a commission and what you want to look at over the next few weeks or so. Then it pulls out for you which sections, excuse me, specifically have substantive changes. So here you've got that Section 18A10-135, and that's the military influence area I was just mentioning. And then subsection 175 is where that housing reasonable accommodation language is. And then you also have a change back up in Section 060 where the way that density calculations have been done over time is changing, and that's where that's explained within the document. And then you'll see, again, that last line within the rectangle says, see Page 21. That's where you would start for this chapter, so it's a reference point. So for each one of these pages, again, you're going to see that off to the right, whether or not there's any substantive changes at all. If there, the answer is no, all of that language is in the current code, but maybe it's in a different part of the code and it's being moved. Or maybe it's been redrafted a little bit, new terms have been inserted, but there is no substantive requirement change for an applicant to deal with. And so you'll be able to see where to focus your time, and new users to the code will be able to see where there are changes to what they might have to do based on this list that's getting built. So in administration, you'll see this as well now. Up at the top, there, right under the word administration, there's Section 005, and it just says definitions. What's now in the code is instead of definitions for that chapter, it simply says, go back to 18A10-180 and look at the definitions. So if somebody were to jump to a specific chapter and then don't realize all the definitions are moved, that's there in each chapter to say, that's where you go. This is the administration section, and you'll see it's talking about application types, application fees, what constitutes a complete application, how reviews are done, who you get your decisions from and how you appeal things, how much time you have, and it goes all the way down into certificate of occupancy. And then there's a couple of kind of sundry things, annexed land and how that's handled within the city code and the transfer of development rights program. On the right, you'll see in Sections 060, 070, and 140 are where the substantive changes are. And then again, if you want to go right to the page, it's 104 to start looking at that Continuing in administration, it's a lengthy chapter. You've got Part 2, which is related specifically to non-conforming uses. So these are the uses, and I think all of you know this commission, but this is where it maybe was, it was legal at the time it was built, but rules have changed, and if it were to be built today, it would not be allowed as it is. So that's a non-conforming use. This is how to deal with them, how long they can last, if they burn down or if something else happens to them, can they be rebuilt? If they are abandoned, how long can they stand vacant before having to get removed? All of that stuff related to non-conforming uses, that's all been rewritten. So you'll see in the section off to the right, that rectangle, it says, new requirements. And then there's also changes within that subsection 258 relating to conditional uses. Page 113 is where you would go.
Just your administrative notes here, in that you've got up there, .200 to .299, but you stop it down here on your list at .268. That just means that that gives you space for the future?
Correct, correct.
It doesn't mean there's something missing.
Correct, yes. And I apologize, I should have made that clear. Public notice requirements, and then appeals and reconsideration. So again, this is still the administration section, but it's a couple of parts broken out, subsections. On the right side, again, you'll see where there's new stuff. It's just in that 400 appeals section. The reason you see two pages under where to see it is on this page, you'll see there's a Part 3 and then a Part 4 on the left. The first page number you see in the rectangle is for the Part 3 part, and the second one is where Part 4 starts. So again, hopefully this is going to be a navigational tool for you. The, oh, I'm sorry, one thing I wanted to do. The conditional uses, this is something that actually took me a while to understand. Conditional uses are allowed, but they have conditions put on them. Conditional uses are not maybe yes, maybe no. Does that make sense? So like, there's permitted outright, there's, right now, there's conditional uses and there's administrative uses. What this is proposing to do in this code is simplify which is which, and so you'll see those tables that say C or P for conditional or permitted outright. But that was just a point that finally dawned on me, was with conditional uses, the answer won't necessarily be no, but it will be yes if, and you have to do X, Y, and Z in order to meet the conditions required to get your approval. Does that blow your mind? Is that wrong?
Yeah. I'm sorry to interrupt, but conditional use permits, traditionally, we aren't really guaranteed that they're going to be approved.
Yeah.
Understanding that to be, yes, they will be, but there may be a long.
There's conditions. And so practically speaking, an applicant might say, that's just too much, I'm not going to do it. But there's going to be, this is how you get to yes, these are the conditions that are going to be required for you to get an answer of yes. Okay? Let's see. So again, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time stepping you through this, but I, hopefully, this will make sense. But each page goes through a specific, either whole chapter or a part of a chapter, and explains where the substantive changes are and where you would need to spend time, unless, of course, you have other sections that you know are a bugaboo for yourself or somebody that you work with or have heard from and you want to spend time there, too. But this is pointing out to you where there have been changes. So in 18A30 discretionary permits, the comprehensive plan amendment cycle, we just finished a couple of weeks ago, actually, the 2019 comprehensive amendment cycle. This now talks about what needs to happen for someone to apply for a comprehensive plan amendment, which could be a rezon, a redesignation, et cetera. And then it also talks about how long it takes to get through the process, what the process is with the commission and then the city council, and then what happens after something gets approved or not. Here's an example of there's no changes at all. Here's a conditional use permit, and there's no substantive changes. Here's the page, 143 is where it starts in the packet, but you'll see here, there's what the purpose and the type of action it is, meaning is it going through the city council, is it going to the hearing examiner, that sort of thing. The criterion conditions for approval, hence the conditional use name, and then all of the listed types of conditional use permits follow. Cottage housing has its own little section here where there's no changes, and then the development agreement, that contract that a city can enter into with the developer also has no changes, so it's just moved, new numbers, but no new substance. There are some changes here within the Part 5 related to things that have been done administratively with policy and are now getting dropped into code. Plan developments, no substantive changes, but there's a page reference for you. Rezoning and text amendment, this is where some of the site-specific rezon things that you talked about earlier this year as a commission has now been added to the code. And then temporary use permits, so a parade permit, a special event permit, those types of things. No changes there, but the chapter's there for you to look at should you wish. Transitory accommodations, this is kind of the Airbnb world, and Mr. Brewer wanted me to make, wanted me to ensure that you understood. This one in particular, so the 18A3770 section there, that Part 9, is something that could get pulled back out if you feel it needs more time, if it needs more consideration, maybe more outreach before it gets thrown into 18A. It's relatively new language that's been added. And it's, how do you deal with those short-term rentals? Or do you at all? Do you allow them? Do you forbid them, whatever? So maybe think about that and be ready to talk about that on the 21st, whether that's something that, as a commission, you feel comfortable incorporating here or taking it out and talking about it separately. And then you have variances and unusual uses, those things that just can't be anticipated in code right now. So if we were sitting here two years ago doing this and someone started talking about, we're going to have a new wireless facility thing, we're going to mount them all on telephone poles instead, none of us would have been able to predict that at that point. That would be considered an unusual use, and it's something that's unanticipated. If you were to jump in your electronic packet, and I'm not going to ask you to do this, but if you were, to go to Page 187 of your packet, you would start to see the big tables of uses, and this is where a lot of change has happened visually to the code. I'm going to jump to there just so I can mention a couple things. This is where you'll see tables instead of text. So if you have, it starts with agriculture. If you have agriculture across the top of this table on Page 189, for instance, down the left side of your code, you're going to see the various different types of things you can do related to agriculture. So just for giggles, the first thing you hear in this table is commercial beekeeping. So if someone are thinking, I want to open a commercial beekeeping facility, where can I do that? If I were to look across the table now, it lists on that table all of the different zones within the city, and then the P means something is permitted outright, the C means something is a conditional use, or the dash means something is not allowed at all. So you would go to, say you wanted to do this beekeeping operation in your backyard, and you were in an R1, R2, 3, or 4 zone, or any of the multifamily zones for that matter, you could do that permitted outright. So you follow the rules and you're going to get an approval. If you were trying to take it, however, to the central business district zone, so say you wanted to do it across the street as part of town center, there would be conditions applied to that approval, so that conditional use process would be used instead. And there would just be a couple of extra steps and process that would be required in order to get that approval, and you would have to satisfy the conditions that the city said in order to get that yes. If, for whatever reason, you are looking at property within Commercial 3, it's not allowed there because of the purpose of that zone. And if you got into some more definitions and explanations, hopefully that would become evident why the answer would be no. But there, the answer is no. You would not be able to do that. And so if you were bound and determined and come hell or high water, I want my beekeeping operation in C3 or on this parcel, you would either be coming to the council to say, change what's allowed in C3, or you would be asking for a rezon of the property to get it into one of the other zones where it would be allowed. But as it sits in this code, you could do it for sure in the residential zones, you could do it with conditions in those commercial zones, but for whatever reason, C3, the answer's no. And that's how this whole table section in 18A40 is set up for all of the different zones, all of the different uses, and all of the different types of uses. This is where there is concern. There's been a couple of different meetings with stakeholders where people were wanting to ask questions about, well, what about this type of use? Or what about what used to be listed as a use level? That's all been simplified, and the intent, for the most part, has not been to eliminate things, but to simply re-codify them in a new way. And so for sure, this is going to get some additional edits from stakeholder input between now and the next time you see it. Just know that. I can't tell you what those changes will all be right now, but between now and 21st of August, and perhaps again before September 4th, these tables are going to get one more run-through with some stakeholders, and we'll make sure that their concerns have been heard before it comes to you. But otherwise, the rest of that chapter is all pretty much set up that same way, where you have explanations of the permitted, the conditional use, or the noes. And then following that, there are footnotes that apply to the table and give you more detail about specific things based on whichever footnote is called out. Does that make sense? Good? Okay. The overlay districts, these are not changing, but there is a flood hazard overlay and a senior housing overlay, and then the sexually oriented business overlay within the city. Each one of them have their own sets of rules for where that overlay applies. And I don't want to get into too much confusing stuff about overlays, but you've got zones, and let's just say these are five parcels, and three of them are one zone, and this is a different zone, and that's a different zone, because this is Bridgeport Way and this is some other street. An overlay could be over all of these zones. You could have the flood hazard overlay over all three. And so all three of these zones, even though each one, the residential, the commercial, I can't remember what I said, industrial, they have their own uses that are allowed within those zones, right? They all have to comply with the overlay. So even if it's a house here, an office building here, and some kind of warehouse here, there's also going to be the flood hazard rules that they have to comply with. If they were not in this overlay, they would each have their own rules and they would all do their own thing, and they would be all good. Hopefully that makes sense. So the same thing applies for the senior and the sexually oriented business overlay. Site planning and general development standards, just like the title says, this is when you're getting into the guts of an application for development or redevelopment. This is where you get those rules of setbacks and building heights and how you can lay out a building on the lot itself, maybe your densities to some extent. On the right-hand side in your rectangle, you'll see that there are substantive changes in a couple of sections, and then you'll see the page again where to start looking for that chapter. No substantive changes in the community design landscaping and tree preservation. So this is not touching trees. This is not touching landscaping, whether it be residential or commercial or industrial. There is a change in Part 3 here where there is an establishment or an update to the city tree fund, but any other tree discussion, so should the commission have anybody come to you during public comment and start talking about tree preservation requirements? about tree preservation requirements? Staff would recommend that that gets set aside as a, a separate issue to be taken after 18A as a whole is adopted. So it may come up, I don't know if it will, I haven't heard anything specific yet, but if something were to come forward, that's staff's recommendation, is you get done with 18A and then come back, like you might come back to the short-term rentals, same idea, maybe it gets pulled out separately sep, for a later conversation. Parking is an entirely new chapter, I think I mentioned that earlier. So all of these have been updated, and so this would be a spot to just take a look at and read through in its entirety. It's not long, just to see and understand how parking requirements have been updated. No changes to that subsidized housing chapter that I mentioned at the beginning, and then you heard tonight, the wireless service updates regarding 5G. Signs, again, it's the ordinance that just was passed very recently by the city council. So any questions before I move on to the next part? I know this is a heck of a lot to throw at you, I know. But any, any questions on how this is being provided to you?
Any questions?
Just generally, so, so like, I identified parking was kind of all-new, so there's a lot of pieces there. It seemed like there might be some subtle changes in some other areas that I'm not sure were identified.
Okay.
So, for example, and I'm just going from memory, so I could, I could have it wrong, but even under trees, I had thought the previous code allowed for, that there wasn't a significant tree preservation requirement on lots smaller than certain size. And I, and here I, it looks like lots up to 17,000 square feet do have a requirement, and so I think that might be a change.
It may well be, yeah.
And, and if, if so, if, if there are some of those, is there a way to identify that?
Yeah, and I will apologize to you in advance. If there's something like that that you catch, absolutely, please bring it to my attention, and I will also go over this again with Mr. Buer and make sure we're not dropping stuff where we should be telling you this is a change. As you can see, this is a huge document, and we may well have erred and, and left something off the list.
Any other questions? Well, I think this is easier for us to read. I mean, for me it is.
Okay.
Maybe not for Mr. Wagamans.
I have a question now that you said that, Connie. So, let's say I have a lot, and I decide I want to build a house. So I start down, I know I'm probably going to need some kind of application, so I start there, and I start going down. How does it tell me, you know, then I have to maybe look at my lot and see if I have a tree on it, right? And then, and then I have to look at, so I have to start jumping around. Is there something that kind of walks me through step by step?
Well, that, I would suggest you would start with looking at your permit application, because the permit application forms are set up for specific types of development, and they will ask the relevant questions and refer you to specific code sections. So you can certainly have the code in front of you and approach it that way, but you could also go to either the website and, and look under the planning forms section, or go in and talk to somebody in person, and find out from the form itself what's being required of you. So if you were to go in and say, "I'm trying to build a house on a clean lot, there's nothing there yet," they will say, "These are the forms you need to look at, and within each form, these are what you're going to have to do. This is what we need right now to call this permit complete, to move it forward. This is what you're going to have to do before final approval." And that will assist you and point you to specific sections in the code.
And then, if I want to do something and, and, and the code won't let me do it, then what do I do?
If it's a conditional use, maybe there's some room to have discretion with your community development director. There are sections within here where discretion is still allowed. If it's permitted, or, excuse me, if it's not allowed at all, that's also an opportunity to be talking first to the community and economic development department, and then if that's, if there isn't the discretion allowed in code for some sort of waiver, or variance, or deviation, then you would be looking at a legislative request for a change with the council.
Or you just come to meetings and hold signs up and stuff, maybe?
If you really wanted to give that a try. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to try to move through this next section relatively quickly since we've already talked about it. But this is a little more detail about that military influence area. As you can see, this is citywide because of Lakewood's position in relation to the base, it's that close. But the idea here is, these areas are considered either military importance, as a term of art, or military critical because of the training routes for the, the planes. Within this chapter, the idea is you're, you're going to be doing something with, that, I'm sorry, you're not going to be doing something that produces light emissions that would interfere with pilot vision and training. The exterior lighting shall be arranged and operated in such manner that it's not misleading or dangerous to the aircraft operating from the base. And then you see there, underlined, except for lighting and associated with single-family homes, mobile homes, and duplexes, you have to fully shield exterior lighting so that is not affecting the operations and, and aircraft flying overhead. It also requires coordination, which is actually something Lakewood already does, but when there's a comprehensive plan or a zoning amendment being considered by the city, we also notify the base to let them know, and if they want to make any comment, they're welcome to do so. And actually, this last comp plan cycle, there was a update to the, the discussion about JBLM in the comprehensive plan, and they did provide quite a few comments about that to make sure things were, were factually accurate. It also requires the notice to property owners that are seeking permits or, or wanting to take action about the fact that, or that they just live here, that JBLM is there, in case they didn't already know that. But it, because it's there, there's going to be noise and potentially odors or flight safety hazards that they are just, because they're that close to the base, it's a fact. And so that is also already in Lakewood's code, but this is just being reemphasized in this new chapter. The notice to the buyers and lessees and tenants is something that Lakewood has had in its code. I can't remember at this point if we're going to keep it exactly the same, or if we're waiting on some state recommendations, and those of you who are in the real estate industry may have heard a little bit about that. And then compatible use standards for air corridor 1, 2, and the clear zone, we've already dealt with that in the most recent comprehensive plan amendment cycle. So that's the military influence area. Getting into the reasonable accommodation, we already talked about this, but this is, again, a federal requirement coming down to the city of Lakewood regarding fair housing, making sure anybody and everybody can have reasonable accommodation within their dwelling. Outdoor lighting, so this, again, coming back to the military concerns, but as you say, Commissioner Wagaman, this is also of benefit for other reasons. But the, what you see on top is it's outdoor lighting, new, replacement, additions and alterations, or other lighting where they're attached to. It's not retrofitting. And then you see on the second half of that slide, everything this does not apply to. Indoor lighting, lighting solely for signs, repairs to the existing luminaires, temporary lighting, underwater lighting, short-term lighting with temporary use permit activities, or construction lighting. These are the light zones that have been identified within the city of Lakewood. So the purple is the actual airfield itself over to the bottom right. The green is considered military critical, so because of how the planes are flying and because of what's located on those properties, that's got a certain level of regulation. Light Zone 2 is the blue, that's what most of the city is, it's considered military important, and that is where most of the residential area is, and you'll see also that's where most of the requirements actually don't apply, because a lot of the residential development, it does not apply to. And then the high-intensity lands are those industrial lands up at the top there near the northern boundary of the city. So again, that's got its own level of regulation. Long story short, here you go. Right now, some of the older light systems in the city of Lakewood as well as elsewhere would be either that bad or very bad type. What is being suggested or required in this code is the better or the best. And again, there's lots of reasons why to do this, other than just the military operations. And fortunately here, with the technology, as somebody replaces their fixture, whether it's on the sports field, or maybe it's right-of-way lighting, this tends to be lower maintenance and lower cost over time to do anyway. Site-specific rezons, we just went through this with the planning commission, and I'm sure you're happy to get rid of it, but here it is now being dropped into 18A from the ordinance 704. Wireless service facilities, we've already talked about this tonight, so again, this is where 18A95 is getting its requirements from that FCC ruling, and then the interim regulations being updated a little bit to become permanent. The sign code was something that, again, the, the commission spent a lot of time on this year, and it just went into effect about a month ago. The signs, there's been a lot of notification out to property owners and business owners about this new code. There's not been very active enforcement yet, and the thought is education first, because these are some changes. And so far, from what I understand, that education process has been going pretty well. That's the handout. If you haven't already seen it, it's available on the website, and I think it's been circulated pretty widely as well. But those are a summary of what the code requires for sign regulations, whether they're temporary or permanent. So here we are at those last couple of pages. These are a summary of where the substantive changes are. So if you want to spend some time between now and the next meeting, understanding where there are actual changes and what's being required of someone, these are the sections. And then at this point, this is the schedule for 18A consideration. We're here tonight doing what we're doing. On the 21st, what I was thinking, but please tell me if you'd rather do it a different way, is that we would spend time answering your specific questions about what you have now in front of you, so you've got a couple of weeks to take a look at it. Or if there's issues where it's a current code section that isn't proposed for change, which you think it should be, or you're wondering why it's not, absolutely, we can talk about that on the 21st. And you may, one more time, you may be getting a few amended tweaks based on stakeholder input. Another couple of weeks after that is the public hearing regarding 18A. And then on the 18th of September, it's up to you whether you'd like it to be strictly discussion, or if you potentially would be ready to take action that night. If not, we're open on October 2nd for you to do that. So you can have one or two, or longer if you need it, of course, but one or two is anticipated here, discussions before you take action on 18A and send it along to council. And the thought is, once you're done with it, they would be working with this and be done by the end of the year.
Any comments or questions?
So we're going to be providing questions and comments on this, you know, all of the 18A stuff at the next meeting, then?
Questions now, I may not be able to answer the question, but that's the thought, is next, next time is, is what do you want to talk about? Let's get into the weeds that you see needing discussion.
Okay. Since I'll be fishing.
Yes.
And I'll just ask one question now that I have, is, are we going to do something? I, I, I end up putting lots of light fixtures up for people externally in my little handyman business, and so when, when those fixtures, you know, when you go to Lowe's or Home Depot, would it be possible to put a sign up and say, "Hey, if you live in this area, you know, you need to be sensitive to some of these things," because that's a retrofit, you know, and, and in a sense, you just tell a citizen, or maybe we need to have somebody go in and look at specific light fixtures, "Hey, if you're going to install a light fixture, you need to be careful or think about it."
Mm-hmm. I will do some more research on that, but where, I'm remembering the conversation when, when we had some stakeholder folks meet with the actual consultants who drafted this code, was that most, if not all of what you're buying, there already is going to comply. So the, the fact that you're looking at newer LED types of lighting, the frequency, and then how, how they're built, and where the light is directed, more likely than not, it's going to comply, but I can do some more research there.
Well, I was just thinking, it, you know, let's say we had a planning commission party, and we wanted to have a spotlight out in
Sure.
in our front yard or something. We, we really shouldn't be doing that.
Yeah. Unless you get a special event temporary permit, and then you're allowed to do that for that one evening or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Tiffany.
All right, so between now and August 21st, you have a lot of fun reading to do.
Yes. So we have no public hearing and no new business, unless you have something, since this?
Sorry, no, we have no new business, and Mr. Branstad is not here, and there is not a, a council replacement for him this evening, he's out of state.
Yes. Okay. Anything, last minute from the commissioners?
The slideshow that Ms. Minor did, is it possible to get a hard copy of that?
It should be right in front of you.
Um, well, I haven't.
That's it.
Well, the, the slideshow that she did.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, we can get that to you tomorrow, yes.
Yeah.
You want it in hard copy, or you want it emailed?
Email's fine.
Okay, we can get it to you that way.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so no other comments, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Connie.
Thanks.
The Elvis look.
Okay.